Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this final session of Chris Pamses Town Council for 2021. May I have a motion to change the start time of council, please? Could we please read that from the description given on your tablet?
Yes, council, move council to change the start time of the December 22nd, 2021 regular meeting. This meeting will follow the committee, the whole meeting due to COVID-19. This meeting will have no public access, however, it may be viewed in the town's YouTube page.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda, please. Councilor Miller.
Move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. I'd like to begin this evening by acknowledging the recent deaths of Chris Pamses residents Shirley Corkum and Steve Sanderson. Shirley Corkum served as deputy mayor of Chris Pamses from 1986 to 1989. She served under Councilor Olson, who was the mayor of Chris Pamses at that time. Steve Sanderson was a familiar face here at Town Hall, as he rarely missed a council meeting prior to the pandemic. He was also a prolific writer, who penned many letters to the editor. On behalf of Town Council, I extend our sympathies to their family and friends. On this, our last session of council for 2021, I'd like to give a little bit of background for the year gone by. Everyone was impacted by the pandemic again this year, and those impacts continue to be felt. As we look forward to the new year, I wanted to speak briefly about the highlights of the past year. I'm extremely proud of the installation of a rainbow crosswalk on Randy Jones Way at the Qplex. Rainbow crosswalks are globally recognized symbols for municipalities and community groups seeking to express support, inclusion, and equality for members of the LGBTQ+ community. This was not a huge infrastructure project in terms of cost, but it was one of our first orders of business as a new council in June. Chris Pamses is known as a welcoming, progressive municipality, and the rainbow crosswalk serves as an important symbol of our town's inclusive spirit. Chris Pamses is a growing community, and I believe our residents enjoy the quality of life that exists here. Our recreational amenities are certainly a large contributor to making us a community of choice. The Qplex celebrated its 10th anniversary this year. It is truly the bumping place in our community, meaning that when you go there, you're sure to bump into somebody that you know. Minens Cove Park was a massive improvement plan. We have nearly doubled the seating capacity, which has made the beach house an even more popular destination for weddings, showers, and community events. The beach house project included a redesign of the parking area, playground upgrades, higher netting at the ball field, a generator to allow the building to serve as a comfort center during emergencies, and we connected the beach house and the ball field to the municipal sewer system. Millennium Cycle Bike Park opened to the public in November. Located across the road from Minens Cove Park, it is accessible via Leeswood, Sycamore, and Evergreen Drives. The park offers more than six kilometers of trails for beginner, intermediate, and advanced cyclists with stunning views of the Kennebec Cassis River. This is yet another example of our commitment to recreation, a new amenity for outdoor experiences. Along with the Qplex and Minens Cove, the Arts and Culture Park is another gem in our community. It is always great to see so many families out enjoying the holiday dreamland here at the Town Hall. It truly is a spectacular light show. We passed our 2022 budget with a 2.65 cent decrease on the tax rate. We understand that the surge in residential assessments has a direct financial impact on our residents, so we felt it important to cut our tax rate to ease some of that burden. When compared to other jurisdictions, Chris Pamses has a very low tax rate, yet we are still able to provide the services our residents have come to expect. The provincial government has passed legislation required to implement its white paper on local government reform. There are no changes to our boundaries, meaning Chris Pamses is not directly impacted by short-term changes. Regionalization of fire and police services has already been successfully implemented in the Kennebec Cassis Valley. Chris Pamses and Rosay are a template for collaboration. The residents of Chris Pamses, sorry, the residents of Kennebec Cassis Valley are well-served by this partnership. The white paper does promise a new equalization system in 2023. The current system was implemented in 2012, and Chris Pamses looks forward to a funding formula that we can support and that supports Chris Pamses. These are challenging times, and I believe our new council has done an exemplary job since taking office in early June. I look forward to the new year as we continue to work together as a council team with our staff as we unveil an exciting new strategic plan for our community. I want to wish all Chris Pamses residents a Merry Christmas and a peaceful and happy New Year. I hope you find joy with your family and friends during this special holiday season. Moving forward, I will ask Councilor Luck to read the treaty acknowledgement and moment of reflection.
Thank you, Your Worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Chris Pamses exists on the traditional territory of the Wallistawig, Malacite, and Micmac people, whose ancestors, along with Passamaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. Maybe make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. I'm looking for disclosure of interests. There are none. Item number five is presentations. Master Transportation Plan Director of Engineering and Works, Mr. Loge, and he is with us virtually this evening. Good evening, Mr. Loge.
Good evening, Your Worship. Thank you for the opportunity to present our transportation master plan, the Part A document this evening. I had sent the document to council previously once we'd received it, and we just wanted to take a quick opportunity to go through a few of the key points in that particular document as we move forward. The document, if council recall, we engaged end globe engineering to help us with our master transportation plan. And we broke it down into two parts, an A and a B, in that with the A part, we're actually going to be doing a review of our transportation infrastructure, looking at levels of service, the policies that we have in place. We'll be preparing an outline for the actual comprehensive document to be prepared. Now, we chose to take this approach because we wanted to give council the opportunity to have some strategic information when at times it came for council to undertake the visioning exercise that we'll be doing in the next few months. So it gives the ability for council to go into this process having a little bit extra information. So when we look at the document itself, what we broke down, we started in the early summer, in June of 25th, and we looked at a profile of the community overall. We had a consultant look at the policies and plans that influenced our transportation network. We looked at the existing network that we have. We assessed the connectivity of the town, particularly when it comes to key destination points, and we looked at the network and how those come into play. We also had an opportunity to engage the residents through a survey, an online survey, and we actually went through an interview process with stakeholders that were using the system as well. So we wanted to make sure there was a comprehensive approach when it came to the, that we wanted to take. Now, we looked at specific trends when we developed the document, and when we looked at the trends that we had, we could see that from the general perspective, council understands these are things coming out of the stat scan, but you know, we've got an average household that's slightly larger than the provincial average. We're actually a younger community than we see in the provincial median ages, although we will acknowledge that since the last census, we have aged slightly, and that trend is being represented. From a network perspective, and these are stat scans numbers, we see that 72% of our population actually commutes outside of Kings County. You know, 88% of them commute with a personal vehicle, and 59% of those commute 15 minutes or longer in that 15-minute to 30-minute timeframe for their work or for whatever purposes. So the commuting is a major component of our community, and then it's represented in what we're finding in the stat scans trends. So taking all this into account, we looked at our existing plans and policies. We had the consultants really do a document review to look at our major policies that were in place. We started out with our municipal plan document. That municipal plan sets a framework for our new planning documents. You know, our existing municipal plan, we look at things like, you know, do we meet our needs? Do we meet our goals? And those are established in that planning document as we've taken on various planning exercises. So from a transportation perspective, this document actually sets that framework. We look at things like sustainability. We look at things like the physical, environmental goals that we have as a community. The municipal plan also sets a transportation master plan that we envision. Other components of this plan would be things like a pedestrian plan, a bicycle plan, a street network plan, even looking at transit strategy and any demand management strategies that we want to do when it comes to transportation in the municipality. So we looked at other policies as well. We looked at our traffic active transportation plan. And if council recall, this is a document that was created in 2011. And that particular document looked at trails, types, connectivity, street sections, any of the barriers that we see with the trail networks and the growth and the phasing of those trails. And at the time, there was an implementation that the council of the day wanted to see, which was a connected network. And there was a recognition that in doing that, it was going to take a time to develop it while the town continued to grow. And one of the things that our consultants have indicated to us in this particular document that we have here is that the 2011 plan was aligned with best practices at the time, and there have been significant shifts in the best practices. And what we envision happening as we do this master plan is that we'll be taking those new shifts into account. One prime example is the movement away from shared lanes when it comes to cycling and things of that nature. So that particular document was used as the ability to look at what we had in place now. We looked at our traffic calming policy, which was the next one that we looked at, and this was created in 2009. And what that did is it establishes a consistent and predictable and explainable process for neighbors and subdivisions to issue, to submit an issue to the town for consideration. That particular project was aligned as well back in 2009 with the best practices. And from our research for this, in this particular document, we found that there have been not a lot of changes over the last decade. Most of the changes that have been identified as part of the review have been with consideration of alternate methods of traffic calming that have been developed over time. Some of the things that we've looked at strictly beyond just a speed bump is things like, you know, diversions, rapid, remote radar signs, things of that nature. So those types of things that we're looking at when it comes to changes. We also looked at the fact that we've created an asset management plan. Now, the question may come into why would an asset management plan come into our transportation master plan? But that's a policy that drives how we fund the different levels of our infrastructure. It funds the future planning of that infrastructure. It also funds the levels of service goals we have for that. So we've always discussed about, it's no use to put in a sidewalk if you can't plow it. It's no use to put in a street if you can't plow it. So the asset management plan plays a key role in that particular considerations. So the document itself took us through various levels of examination. We're looking at our traffic network, and we look at the major routes of consequence. We can see that the highest volume routes through the community as a whole were really associated with Route 1, the Mackay Highway, and really that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction, but it does give us a framework for when we look at the balance of the other streets in the municipality. Not surprisingly, the Gondola Point arterial, another through road, is the next highest volume street in the municipality. And then another numbered road, that Route 100 Hampton Road, is the third highest volumes of traffic when we get into the town. When we look at our other collectors in the municipality, we get things like the Pentagon Road, Millennium Drive, Vincent Road, Chris Pamses Road, and to a lesser degree, the Gondola Point Road. These are our major volume roads in the town. And when we look at the different comparisons when it comes to the volumes, we can use that as a framework for when we look at the rest of our street network. The document also looked at the intersections within the municipality. And what we've seen is that the busiest intersection, the intersection of Hampton Road and the Pentagon Road, operates at the lowest level of service, if you will. When you look at levels of service, performance levels, and it's just like going back to grade school, As are good and Fs are bad. We can see that the different intersections within the town during this particular review, we were indicated that the busiest intersections, obviously at peak times, operated at the lowest levels of efficiency. And at the fire end, the Chris Pamses Vincent Road, which had the lowest volumes of traffic through it, operated at the best levels of efficiency. So those are the different considerations when it comes to your network. If you have nodes of conflict or nodes of delays, those may be at those intersections. So those all come into play when we look at our network analysis for the municipality as a whole. The other part of the master transportation plan that was looked at was the trail network. And the Director of Community Services has done a great job of bringing back to council the fact that our trail network has consistently high use in the last few years, particularly so after the COVID. And what we're looking to see is, if we envision over the next little while, will the trends continue? If this is going to be the new normal when it comes to the trail use? And that's a question that will be posed when we look in this next document. So the trail network is a major part of that master transportation plan network. The next item that we had was the, the document also looked at key destinations within the town. So what that means is, we look at the nodes being places that people want to go, and we say, how do they get there? So this Part A document looked at the AT network to these particular areas. Is there automobile connectivity? Is there public transit? And in doing that, it helps us frame a plan for the future in finding gaps where things have been established or where things should be established. The document covers the main destinations that we identified when we look at things like the Qplex, the Chris Pamses Memorial Arena, the Shoppers Plaza area, Millennium Drive area, Minnes Cove area. You know, there's a few more areas, but what it does is it recognizes the fact that it's not just one central drawing point in the municipality. Even on the screen, when you look at the Arts and Culture Park as a draw, the Arts and Culture Park is surrounded by so many immediate destination points, whether it's Firefly Park, whether it's the mall or the library. So those all enable the town to look at that connectivity side of things when we look at the document that was being prepared. We talked about the document being, make sure that there's some level of community engagement. Now, in this particular scenario, we looked at an online survey that was available for a month. We had about 176 responses that we saw people engage with. And talking to various consultants for a month, 176 responses is actually quite good. And they were happy with those levels of responses because the nature of the responses they got were very valuable, provided some major themes of concern and ideas that were brought forward. There was a constant, a consistent theme that active transportation was valuable to the respondents of the survey. They felt that it was important to ensure that we had connectivity between the different modes of transportation, but also between different destination points, as was highlighted on the previous slide. The road surface itself, it was an interesting discussion because the paving of the roads was generally well-received, but they recognized that that would, in addition, help impact additional use, whether it's bike uses or running or walking. So they recognized that it was important to make sure that we had an appropriate road surface management system, not just for street, for the cars, but for alternate methods of transportation. Safety, obviously, is always paramount when it comes to the folks that responded to the survey. And that went from the full gamut of safety, from bicycle safety, the ability to travel on our networks without having the impact from vehicles, to safety on the trails, the mixed-use trails, whether those will be properly managed, and then safety of the road network itself. And again, it goes back to maintenance, the enforcement of our traffic calming policies, the enforcement of speed limits by the regional police department. That was reflected in some of the themes that were held, that came back. And finally, the other item that came forward from the survey was the concept of traffic management. And what that meant was, as we build off of on safety, it also meant on managing traffic within subdivisions and how do we ensure that that continues? Whether it's traffic calming policies, whether that's changing the design of a subdivision to make sure that it's safer, whether that is working with the residents themselves to find out what is the preferred method. As I mentioned, the one thing that came back from this community engagement process was that the consultants were quite pleased with the tone and the nature of the feedback that they did receive from a, from a meetings with the individual stakeholders. The same type of messaging came forward. The consultants had actual meetings with the, both the Works Department and our Community Services Department. They had discussions with the NBDTI, the Transportation Department, St. John Transit, as it stands to COMEX, CN Rail, the Fire Police Department, with the School District, and with the recreational groups such as the lockers, the runners, and the cyclists. And what that did is it reinforced a lot of the comments that came back from the engagement survey, but it also brought into some specifics challenges that these particular groups felt should be addressed by the town. And that was incorporated into this document A that's being presented to the town. So when we take all this into account, the document prepares for us a consideration of what they're calling future focus. Now, these are areas of focus that they anticipate will be key when it comes to the preparation of the Part B document, that comprehensive transportation master plan document. And in doing that, if they can structure the Part B and take into account a lot of these focus areas, what that does is it'll give us the ability to make sure that we've got a really good comprehensive transportation master plan. So when we look at the future focus items, one of the things that was widely discussed, not just during stakeholder engagements, but even at the steering committee level, was at some point, the town is going to have to look at deciding what is the hierarchy that they wish to see for the town. You see the little diagram there to the right, is that, what is your focus going to be? Is the higher profile going to be given to vehicles and the lower profile to the residents, the users? Or is it going to be the higher profile going to be given to the people? And the passive methods and the lower considerations given to vehicles? What that means is we then robustly, using the term from the consultants, we look at integrating active transportation into the transportation network. What that means is, as I said, redefines that hierarchy and makes things, whether it's people-centric or auto-centric. Now, that having been said, there are different, roads serve different purposes and different needs in the community, and it could be as simple as saying, well, these types of streets will actually, will be people-centric, and these types of streets will be vehicle-centric. And those are the types of considerations that are taken into account when we're doing designs for infrastructure or making any improvements in the street network that it pertains to. So that's one of the areas of future focus that we would see. Some of the other future focus areas would be to, how do we improve and prioritize the opportunities to connectivity for active transportation? And we were looking at the trail and sidewalk infrastructure. We look at strengthening that by, you know, improving the cycling network or continuing it, adding to it. If there's a way, one of the items that came up, and sometimes a barrier was with regards to who owns or maintains the particular network. You know, one discussion was, the Works Department, for example, manages the sidewalks, but the Community Services Department manages the trails and that side of network. Is there benefit or is there advantage to having those types of networks consistently managed under one group? So those are the types of discussions that would come into play in this next document. We also want to look at phasing the infrastructure that prioritizes the cohesiveness of the network. And what that means is, and we've talked about it at council, a few locations, is that if you say, well, we would like a sidewalk, but if there's a sidewalk that doesn't go anyplace, how cohesive, how connected is that? Make it, so we want to make sure that the planning and the phasing that promotes that cohesiveness of the community when we're looking at the future of the focuses that we have. The other focus that was brought forward is establishing cross-section priorities for our existing right-of-way. In the AT document from 2011, there were some discussions about the hierarchies of streets and what would that be? This particular document, what we envision happening for Part B is taking it beyond that, identifying specific cross-sections for the existing right-of-way. And that means, okay, we have something that's on the ground now. What can we do with it? I know there's been some discussions about taking, you know, adjusting the widths of lanes and adjusting paint to say, okay, well, if we make a lane there, or we can paint a bicycle lane. Okay, can that be done within the existing right-of-way? What ramifications would that be? Is that, can that be safe for doing that? Then we would look at new cross-sections, new streets. If this is a collector road, this is the width that it should be, and these are the If this is a collector road, this is the width that it should be, and these are the infrastructure uh amenities that will be associated with that. If it's a local street, if it's a cul-de-sac, here's what is is expected. Um, and and taking that and creating some some specific widths for that. Um, and and. With these new designs, we look at things like, what are the best practices that would be i- i- that's out there um? You know, it's, we can, we've seen uh a lot of communities that have got a dedicated bicycle lane that's separated by a. A three foot wide median that's grassed and and uh, but if that doesn't apply to us. Okay, what's the best practice for us? Um, in the wintertime, uh when it comes to plowing a a bicycle lane. What types of designs are best suited to a winter environment? So those are the types of things that would we would want to come into play when it comes to looking at establishing future cross sections for for um. For the network. So the other things that we looked at from a future focus would be um identifying opportunities to link the existing networks to key destinations and. That was the, one of the key reasons when they looked at what does the town or what do our residents consider as their key nodes or key destination points? Is make sure that the the um, the. Network connects the people from where they live to where they want to go, but it also k- connects them to key destinations. So, you know, it's it's I guess it's a case of if they do, they actually want to get there from here. If they don't want to get there from here, why is it important to get a network to that? So so those are the types of things that we want to come into play. And one of the other uh uh issues has popped up during the preparation of this A document was that. There are barriers to that geography tha- that is one, the hills that we have in the town, the the. Infrastructure network that exists, the arterial is being quoted as a as a as an issue, the the. Those types of things have to come into play when it comes to how do we get connectivity across the barriers. Um, a regional barrier obviously is one there we have to make sure that we can commute to. Co- participate with and and cooperate with our 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 neighbors in the area, whether it's getting from Hampton to Saint John all the way through. Those are the types of things that that become a barrier as well, it's not just physical, it's also um can be a partnership type of a barrier. Um, we look at things like um the documents, we're looking at future focuses of the, we are a rural community primarily. That means we have to change our thought process when it comes to paved shoulders in rural areas and and. Is it a place for cyclists? Is it a place for breakdown? Is it a place for walking? Um, where the demand may not be there and there's there, the volumes are not as high. What does rural rural paved policy mean for us? And and how do we unify that policy all the way across the community? So. We uh, we felt that the 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 main focus we'll see in the next uh. Part B is also going to be the development case of that road classification strategy. And and in doing that, we would update our existing classifications, we would uh add that active transportation component. We were, we we've had some discussions about scenic heritage. Um, things that are important would be the traffic calming, the speed limit limitations and and how we incorporate that into the designs. Cross sections, road surface policy, policy for rural infrastructure, all of these are going to be a key when it comes to uh. Uh, addressing the needs in the future uh part B document. And 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 uh, you know, there are some discussions as well about uh transfer opportunities. Um, you know, when it comes to transit, you're looking at things like accessibility, you know, the impact on greenhouse gas. Um, and and a regional approach, and the 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 focus will also look at that. Infrastructure and the structure of that transit transportation master plan, uh we want to make sure that the bones of the document is 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 good. That is the policy, are they properly updated? Um, is there a model for future traffic demand? So, so this part A document really gives council uh and staff an opportunity to say, okay, these are the important things for us as we go forward. Um, now, we take this background information and we use this to create the major document that is that part B document. Um, and and as I mentioned, um, it it will play a role in helping us structure that, so there are. A a number of plans that are that have been linked to this A document that will be used as a resource. Um, and as as if council, as they go forward, have any questions or looking forward to getting any feedback on the document itself. We can make sure that we would take that into account when we prepare that part B document on a go forward basis. Um, I know that the council's ad- ad hoc committee for. Uh, active transportation will be using this as a s- as a basis for our discussions uh to help the preparation of this part B. And we really feel that this is a a good starting point to give council. Uh, some strategic information when it comes to their own vision over the next few months. So, uh I I'll leave it at that, your worship, I appreciate the opportunity to to make this presentation. Um, and uh as we go forward, we'll always be looking for feedback or input from from council. Um, and the public at large, this will be a public document, it'll be resting on our website, uh once it's accepted by council. Um, we're using this as a framework as we go forward, so appreciate the time, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. It certainly never ceases to amaze me the volume of work. That is put into uh hiring consultants and then having them assist us with our plans, whether it's the. Master Transportation Plan or the uh Active Transportation Municipal Plan, Asset Management Plan. And and later on, the Strategic Plan. It helps us to realize what the challenges and constraints are and what the possibilities are in our community. And certainly it gives us a vision to focus on the future which you've identified uh throughout your presentation. So, thank you for the work that you and your staff have put into that. And I will open it up now to uh questions through council. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, more so just a comment, I did want to, um, I guess, give kudos to previous council and to staff for having the foresight to really. I mean, this happened before our time in terms of it, you know, get, you know, growing legs. Um, I thought the report was very well done, it was very valuable, and I'm being a bit of a nerd, but I loved reading it. It was a really interesting report, it really gave us a sense of what was going on in our community, which I think is a really good foundation. For making informed decisions for the future based on evidence, so I thought it was a really great report. Um, I also thought it was nice that what the report captured is what at least I'm hearing from residents, so. There wasn't a huge contrast, so I was really happy to see that. And just, I guess, um, one last point is, I'm I'm really looking forward to seeing the updated stats can numbers. To see how our demographics have changed, I know it's only five years, but it will be interesting to see. How many people jump into the higher age demographic and the middle age in those five years, so. Anyway, I thought it was a great report, I think it is going to be a wonderful tool for us to use moving forward. So, kudos to previous council and staff for, you know, making this happen, I think it's going to be really, really great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. We will go now to Counselor Miller.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Loge, it was a fantastic report, um. I I do have to again echo the same comments as Counselor Luck is, thank you very much for for all the time you and your staff and. Everybody else has put into it, it's fantastic. Um, I'm just going to put out a little Christmas wishlist here uh for our upcoming road buildings, because I noticed our paved shoulders, we talked about. That's our future for the rural roads, which I think Meanens Cove Road would probably be classified as, so. I'm just wondering for the twenty twenty two paving, are we looking at putting the the widened shoulders on both sides to kind of follow our future? Or or what we were planning or i- i- that's just kind of a comic, as if that's kind of what we're looking for, that it's kind of. Good that we can start that off in the new new year, and I do know we have an extra hundred thousand dollars we put off to the side for sidewalks, which. Could therefore help with the doubles double side, that just just a question comment, but thank you very much, it was it was a great report.
Yeah, uh through you, through your worship, uh the uh the Means Cove is actually being planned as a as a widened road. And our initial designs are incorporating uh bicycle lane uh outside of the paved shoulder. Um, and we'll we'll continue to do that until we get a budget number and we can bring back before council, but uh. When this particular document talks about rural road paved uh policy. We're looking at some of the subdivision streets um and the local streets, not so much those collector roads. Um, we envision the collector roads like the Means Cove as being potentially. Uh, a higher volume network. And and it goes back to, I think, a few counselors have said it in the past, if you build it, will they come? It's it's a case of, yeah, the town is looking at cycling as an example. As as an important component of that street network and Means Cove. Whether it's Means Cove or the Gondola Boulevard, or whether it's something that if it's a collector road, it warrants this level of. Hierarchy and uh, so that's going to be taken into account when we do part B, but this current budget is identified as a widened road with. Potential for bicycle lanes.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship, um through you too, um Director of Engineering, thank you very much for the report, there's a lot of information in here. And I mean, we could go on and on for hours tonight talking about the different ideas of what's come up out of the um. Survey, so I, there's a couple of things that sort of tweaked my interest and one was um. I know we're looking at figures from Stack Can from five years ago, but um the number of um. People that are commuting and we know that we are a bedroom community and people go into Saint John to work. And that number in comparison with our um number of people that are actually using the bus service. There seems to be a real disconnect there on how many people are commuting and how many people are taking advantage of. Our transit system, which would then fall under climate change. So I think that there there seems to be a lot of work to be done, um whether that's um more information. On why there's a disconnect with the the, I guess, the carbon blueprint. Of using a single vehicle and just one family or one person going to work every day. So that I'm I'm looking forward to discussing that more and will there be an option to do, an opportunity to do that?
Your worship, um, that is one of the areas that was discussed in the this part A document is that the uh. Even meeting with Saint John Transit, they recognize the fact that it's best to take a collaborative approach when it comes to uh development of transit system for the. For the region, but um to counselors, uh Deputy Mayor Schreier's point about greenhouse gas and climate change. The opportunities to educate the public. Um, and the position that the town takes as a partner in climate protection will probably go a long way in promoting. The use of regional transit. And whether there are other opportunities, um I know other communities in the study area. Um, or that that this consultant has has studied, have looked at things like um. Route or or destination transit, that is, you call up, you have the the ability to get from point A to a node. Then that node is where the transit comes, so so almost like a little hierarchy of um transit. But you're correct, uh Deputy Mayor, uh climate change and the greenhouse gas will be pushing this discussion forward. For for quite the next few years.
Can I have a follow up? Thank you, uh thank you for that response, because sitting on the climate change um committee with. The mayor and Counselor Olson, I know that we've um spent and staff has spent um many, many hours trying to. Look at different ways to reduce our carbon footprint. The other um area that I wondered about, it seemed to me when I looked at the report that a lot of it was geared towards. Um, recreational use as co- as opposed to getting to work. If you work in the ba- if you work in Chris Pam Sis, so or getting to the one one um. Uh pharmacy was um actually identified, I think it said shoppers was identified as a destination point. Um, people go shopping, uh so I'm wondering, did we get a lot of response from the commercial? In the um district in Chris Pam Sis or? And commercial plus residents, were they thinking commercial at the same time or were they strictly thinking res- or um leisure? When they were doing the report?
Uh, your worship, the the uh responses that we saw from the survey. Were uh not. It was, it was, it was, the majority was actually getting from point A to point B to is to. Uh, tend at service services, to get services of some kind, so it's going to school, going shopping. Um, going to uh a a a leisure facility, getting from point A to point B. The 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 responses did not say, oh, we need this strictly for recreation. So the bulk of the feedback for connect connectivity and for cohesiveness of the network. Was to enable our residents to get from a destination to another destination. Whether that's for shopping or to go to school or church or whatever it would be. Um, not a lot of feedback to say, um, I I'm the next Lance Armstrong, I need a bicycle loop. In the town, so build it for me, that was not prevalent, that you know, it was very well represented in that. This is the veins and and the arteries of the community to get around.
Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Loge for your uh report. What a pile of information there, there's a lot, there's a lot to digest. And uh, I commend you and your staff for compiling all this and putting it into. Some order that we may be able to relate to as we go through it, just an awful lot to uh to go through and and look at. I guess a a couple of points I'd like to highlight. Um, and one of my pet peeves uh that I've spoken to you about. Before is the synchronization of the lights in Donlon Drive. And I don't know if that's part and parcel of that future digestion of concerns or um opportunities in the town. That will be looked at, uh where, you know, at at any time of the day or night. We come to the intersection, there's no traffic, everybody's in bed, and we have to stop for a red light. And I'm just wondering if uh if that's ever going to be uh addressed, and I know that you've talked to about DOT or. Or whatever their name is now.
Uh, through your worship, yeah, the 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 intersections and the controls of the intersections are an area that we would be. Looking at when it comes to this transportation master plan. Uh, primarily looking at um if signals are synchronized, that is linked from one to the next one. But um, what we will focus on will be, is it the signal the most up to date control mechanism that we have available? So, in the example about, you know, you go there at midnight and they're still going red, yellow, green. Um, that is, a lot of it is a function of the fact that they're uh older controllers. And they have to go through that sequence and what you'll see a lot of subdivisions with new so- new traffic lights, they'll have are. Fully vehic- vehicle actuated, and that is they stay green on on the main drag. Until somebody pulls up to it and then they then they change over, so if the the higher volume street always stays green and and that's the approach that is taken. Um, if you change it and just make it flash all the way around. Um, we go to um our intersection at the Chris Pam Sis Road and the Vincent Road, that goes into a flash mode. Because the volumes aren't there to to warrant a a a mains uh street green. So, so those are the types of things that will come into consideration, but it will be reviewed as part of the review, your your worship.
To follow up, your worship, if I could, um. Uh, one of the other things that we've discussed very briefly is uh some sort of a. A tunnel or whatever under Route One or uh the arterial, I should say, to connect uh Squire Drive side of. Of the community to the Qplex area, where a lot of the kids could communicate or travel through. Something similar to what we have on the extended Vincent Road. Uh, you know, similar to a deer crossing, they put on the Trans Canada or Route Seven going to Fredericton. Um, they just opened up the road and put in this concrete structure and covered it all up again, and then you've got an access underneath. Is that something that would be of practical use uh in our community?
Um, uh, you worship, I think, I think if if Counselor Olson recalls, we talked about this at the last council meeting, um. That's one of the things that we hope this document will will help identify is, is if we're trying to uh direct all of the. AT traffic to a certain location, then we will investigate what is the best way to get them across the arterial. So, so to prevent against, you know, random crossings all the way up and down the the Route One nineteen. They're focused at one location. We've got one central node is at the roundabout and we've got provisions to incorporate pedestrian crossings there this summer. Now, as we go, say closer down towards the ferry landing, is there another mid-block point or should the next intersection be at the intersection with the Means Co. Road? And, and those types of things will come into play. So, so yeah, that, that will be the types of discussion that we'll have. And I would imagine the, the decision tree will involve, well, we, if we go to the intersection of the Means Co. Road, we can put in a crosswalk for fifty thousand dollars. But if we go mid-block and we put in a, a deer or a moose tunnel, pedestrian tunnel, it's a million dollars. So that's going to come into the decision as well.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Thank you, Mr. Loji. Certainly again, a very well-done report and certainly it touch, touches the points that, you know, we're looking forward to focus on in the future and we will see what happens in, in the near future as we enter into the new year. We'll go to the next item.
Well, I was just gonna, I'd just say to, to make sure that, you know, staff and, and their steering committee has some input, but it, you know, it is a report produced by our consultants and globe. They did a, a great job of listening to us and our, and our, our input. So I think that's part of the package is that we had such good opportunity to provide that feedback process and to Counselor Lux's comment about being a data nerd, I, I saved her the head exploding because I didn't include all of the background maps that were, were available as well. So that will really blow her mind when she gets to see it.
Great, thank you very much. And again, certainly a well-compiled bundle of information and again, identifying the challenges and constraints and all the possibilities that Quispam sis holds. So we will move on now to the next item, public hearings, and there are none this evening. So we'll go to the item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion on that, please. Counselor Biggar.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that the minutes of the previous December 7th meeting be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Counselor Biggar, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. And item number eight, unfinished business. Palmer Brook Road Hampton Road intersection, requests for traffic lights and requests for streetlight near Elliott Road intersection. Staff report from the Director of Engineering, Mr. Loji, you're on again.
Thank you, Your Worship, and, and it's, it's interesting how, you know, as a community we're linked. All of our transportation nodes are linked and, and this particular intersection was identified in our transportation master plan document as an area of concern brought forward, not just by the consultants, but as also during the citizen engagement process. So, so what, from a staff perspective, what we're recommending is that we, we go through the exercise of our transportation master plan and, and look at what signal priorities we have in our network, to Counselor Olson's point a little earlier about what are the priorities that we see for our traffic signals. And that way we can work with our consultants on, on this specific intersection to see what, what would be needed. And we may be able to get them to be able to do a high-level review on our traffic warrant rather than paying an additional thousand dollars to do it on its own. You know, to, we have to recognize that if we did put signals at this intersection, we'd be looking at somewhere in the range of a quarter million dollars because it's not just the signals that we're looking at, we're looking at uh, uh, road realignment. There's going to be turning lanes, straight through lanes, so there's going to have to be some construction in that area well beyond anything that we've currently budgeted. So at this stage of the game, it's, it's, we're just recommending that we, we en- ensure that this is appropriately reviewed in our transportation master plan document. And then bring back some recommendations to council before we go to DTI for any warrant, now, warrant submissions, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, Your Worship, I'm prepared to put a motion forward for you, for council to identify the intersection of the Hampton Road Route 100 and the Palmer Brook Road as an area of interest in the development of the transportation mash, master plan for recommendations for submission to DTI for discussion on jurisdictions and warrant or permitting requirements.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Biggar on the question. Please vote now. Who are you voting on? Counselor Biggar? All those in favor, please show by raising your hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number nine, correspondence. There is none. Uh, item number 10, bylaws. Item A, proposed amendment, number 05-21, bylaw by the municipality of Quispam sis, respecting sewage utility, consideration of third and final reading. We can move forward with that? Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Whereas a notice has been published on the town of Quispam sis website pursuant to section 15.3 and 15.4 of the Local Governance Act, the proposed bylaw amendment number 05-21, sewage utility bylaw that received first and second reading at the November 2nd, 2021 regular meeting is hereby summarized as follows. The change, the bylaw in order, to change the bylaw in order to increase the annual sewage user fee from five hundred and three to five hundred and eighteen dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that third and final reading be given to proposed sewage utility bylaw amendment number 005-21, effective January 1st, 2022.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. There are none. Please vote now. Counselor Biggar, your machine is not showing. Are you in favor or opposed? In favor? Can you vote for him? Okay. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item 10B, proposed amendment number 05-22, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam sis, respecting sewage utility, consideration of first and second reading. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd move that first reading be given to proposed bylaw amendment number 005-22, a bylaw of the municipality of Quispam sis, respecting sewage utility with respect to the SMB Service New Brunswick Residential Property Tax Credit Statement as a means of reducing the sewer billing by one dwelling unit.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote now. Voting is in progress and final results are motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Item number 11, new business. Oh, sorry. What was that?
Second reading.
Oh. Sorry, let's go to second reading. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. A second, a second reading to be given to the proposed bylaw amendment number 005-22, a bylaw of the municipality of, of Quispam sis, respecting sewage utility with respect to the, to the Service New Brunswick Residential Property Tax Credit Statement as a means of reducing the sewage billing to, by one dwelling unit.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Uh, Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship, but I guess I have a question to you through to the treasurer since, can we do a third reading tonight or is a second reading good enough because the tax bills will be going out? They're already going out, they're already, but is this, is this sufficient, I guess?
Yep, this is sufficient.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Now we move on to item number 11, new business. Item A, 2021 projected general operating surplus and transfers to or from reserve funds. Counselor Donovan.
I'd like to make a motion. Be it resolved, be it resolved that ninety-five hundred dollars be transferred from the general operating fund to the general general operating reserve fund for future expenditures.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan. Do we? And seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Counselor Olson, do you have a question on that? No? Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. And reading number two. Counselor Donovan.
Be it resolved that three hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars be transferred from the general operating fund to the general capital reserve fund as per the 2021 budget.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item B, projected utility operating surplus and transfers to reserve funds. Oh. Oh yes, okay, sorry, missed that. Counselor Donovan again.
Be it resolved that four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars be transferred from the general operating fund to the general capital reserve fund for future expenditures.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item B, 2021 projected util- Mine is not showing, item number four. So we will go to number four, let's see. Counselor Olson, please.
Be it resolved that four hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars be transferred from the general operating fund to the general capital reserve fund for future use.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. My apologies, it's not showing up on my screen. So we will move on now to 11B, 2021 projected utility operating surplus and transfers to reserve funds. Counselor Olson, please.
Be it resolved that one hundred and two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars be transferred from the utility operating fund to the utility capital reserve fund as per the 2021 budget.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Thank you. Motion carried, seven zero. Second reading. Counselor Donovan.
Be it resolved that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars be transferred from the utility operating fund to the utility capital reserve fund for future use on 2021 capital projects carried forward and planned 2022 projects.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Part three. Counselor Donovan.
Be it resolved that nineteen thousand five hundred dollars be transferred from the utility operating fund to the utility operating reserve fund for future use.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan. Seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. And there is no part four to that, correct? Just checking. Okay, item number C, transfers to and from the utility equipment replacement reserve fund. Counselor Miller.
Be it resolved that forty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars be transferred from the 2021 utility operating fund to the utility capital replacement reserve fund to pay for future costs of replacement of capital items for the wastewater system upgrades.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Next item. Counselor Donovan.
Be it resolved that twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents be transferred from the utility capital replacement reserve fund to the 2021 utility operating fund to pay for the Longwood Treatment Plant Aerator Project.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Item number 13, reports. Item number thirteen, reports. Councillor Olson.
Move, you're receiving, follow your worship.
It's been moved by councillor Olson, seconded by councillor Miller on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. This is arising from Committee of the Whole, ratification of extension of acting CAO assignment. Councillor Biggar.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I would move that the council ratify its decision made at the December seventh, two thousand twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting to extend Aaron Kennedy's acting assignment of acting chief administrative officer until the full return of chief administrative officer Susan DeVell. This extension may be terminated or varied at any time by further resolution of council. Mr. Kennedy's current salary to be adjusted to reflect his additional duties by separate agreement.
Thank you, councillor Biggar. It's been moved by councillor Biggar, seconded by deputy mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero, and I'm sure council will join me in wishing everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and hopefully a healthier twenty twenty-two world coming forward. Uh, I am asking now for an adjournment for twenty twenty-one. Made by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, seven zero. Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year, and happy birthday to my granddaughter who turned nine today.